Hi, everyone. Welcome. My name is Nina Peskin. I'm the Executive Director of The Synagogue. Pull back a little. Too loud. Okay. Thank you. Hi. Thanks for being here, everyone. This is an incredible turnout. I think that it's safe to say everyone involved with organizing this is stunned at the number of people who are here today and really, really pleased. My name is Nina Peskin. I'm the Executive Director of Germantown Jewish Center, and we're really happy to be hosting you all tonight. I just want to make two quick announcements. The first is that we do not allow photography in here because unfortunately, photography can be posted and can show people where our exits are and entrances. And because of the rate of antisemitic incidents in the world, it's actually dangerous for us as an institution to do that. So thank you in advance for respecting that. The second thing I wanted to point out is where our exits are because there are so many people here tonight. Just so as a safety and security practice, the entrance you came in may not be the best one for you to leave by. So I want you to take a look at where you're sitting and take a look at all the exit signs around you. There is an exit where that star is with the red light. There's an exit through that door with the red light and the star. There's an exit that way, that way, that way, and that way. So if we were to have to leave in an emergency and everybody starts to bottleneck through the entrance where you came in, you can imagine it would be dangerous. So just note where the exits are. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Nina. Good evening. My name is Carol Carmichael, and I serve on the Board of the Chestnut Hill Local and the Mount Aerie Local. On behalf of the Chestnut Hill Local and the Mount Aerie Local, the West Mount Aerie Neighbors, East Mount Aerie Neighbors, the Mount Pleasant Advisory Council, the Chestnut Hill Community Association, the Germantown United CDC, and Face2Face Germantown, we are pleased that you are here tonight at this community forum with candidate Cindy Bass and challenger Mr. Seth Anderson Oberman. We hope this will encourage your voice to be heard when you vote on May 16th. Let me introduce the panelists. First, we have Councilwoman, Councilmember Cindy Bass. She was elected to City Council in 2012. Councilmember Cindy Bass represents Philadelphia's 8th Councilmatic District, continuously working to improve the quality of life for her constituents. Bass holds council leadership positions, including Deputy Majority Whip. She is also Chair of the Council's Park, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs and Public and Health and Human Services Committees. Seth Anderson Oberman grew up in the Brickyard section of Germantown. He and his wife Asha are proud Philly public school parents. For the past 24 years in his work as a union organizer, Seth has fought against thousands, fought alongside thousands of workers across several states and within the 8th District to win better wages, health care, and safe working conditions. He has worked for the American Federation of Teachers, the AFL-CIO, H-E-R-E, and since 2018, PA's largest health care union, SEIU Healthcare PA. He has also co-founded the Philadelphia Labor for Black Lives Coalition and serves on the Board of the Philadelphia Student Union. Our two moderators this evening come from the world of journalism. Carla Robinson is the editor of the Chestnut Hill and Mount Aerie Local newspapers. She has been a Philadelphia-based journalist since moving to the city in 1999, when she launched the column for the Philadelphia Daily News. She and her husband have a daughter in the Philadelphia Public Schools, and they reside in Germantown. Cherry Gregg is the afternoon drive host, news anchor for WHYY, 90.9 FM, and co-hosts the all-new Daily Show, Studio 2, also on WHYY. And if you want to have an enjoyable lunchtime, turn into Cherry's radio show. It's quite informative. Prior to her current position, the award-winning journalist and lawyer covered civil rights, social justice, race, and public affairs issues impacting marginalized communities in the greater Philadelphia region, spending nearly a decade on the air at KYW News Radio. She is a longtime Philadelphia resident, most recently in the 5th Councilmatic District. Let's give applause to those who are serving tonight. Now that I've given you the opportunity to express your gratitude to those here, we will absolutely hold all applause until the end of this evening's forum. I want you, if you haven't done thus far, to please make sure your cellphone is turned off. Please, we want to hear from our candidates. And as I invite Josephine Winter, the Executive Director of West Mount Aerie Neighbors, I want to remind everyone, out of respect for the candidates and the attendees who are interested in learning where the candidates stand on the issues, no disturbances from audience members will be tolerated. We ask that you refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, heckling, or making noise during the forum. Audience members who disregard these rules will be asked to leave. And yes, we do have security. Thank you, Josephine.
Thanks, Carol. Good evening, everybody. Honestly, I'm pretty exhausted from putting this forum together over the last couple of weeks. So sorry if I'm a little bit frazzled and if I need to refer to my notes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. I just want to give a quick shout out to the other leaders of the community organizations that helped get this together tonight. Linda Bell is here. Come on, stand up, Linda. Carla Bell. Ann McNipp, where are you? Emily Doley, Germantown United. Craig Heim from Face2Face Germantown. And Lindy, Natalia or Brandon, anybody else here? Craig, I said Craig. All right. Thank you all for your help getting this together and promoting it. This has been, this has been a real community-wide effort, and you can see, see evidence of that with the turnout tonight. I also have to acknowledge the Lenfest Institute's Every Voice, Every Vote Initiative. And the focus of this initiative is to really strengthen democracy across Philadelphia. And that's, their work is, it's happening. It's working. We received over 150 questions from 120 neighbors across our community, and they will all be utilized. Well, not all of them, but the questions, the questions posed tonight will be drawn from that pool. A couple of other quick housekeeping items. Out in the lobby are some QR codes. If you can just take a moment on your way out and scan those codes, that'll link you to our post-form survey. It's really critical to get your feedback about the event this evening. And that's all I got. Cherry, you're up.
Thank you so much, Joe. How y'all doing? Everybody okay? All right. Thank you so much for that introduction and for all of your hard work organizing tonight. I am very pleased to see so many engaged citizens in this room. So, as mentioned, my name is Cherry Gregg, and I will be moderating tonight's discussion with my co-moderator, Carla Robinson here. As you heard, the questions that we will present this evening came from community members, from all of you, and folks who live in this Councilmatic District. The questions were not shared with the candidates prior to tonight's debate. Before we get started, I want to lay out the ground rules for tonight's debate, and then we'll reiterate the rules for the audience. Y'all ready? All right. We will present a number of questions to the candidates, focused on a series of key issues in this district. The moderator will direct a question to a candidate with instructions on the amount of time that the candidate has to answer, up to two minutes per question. Each candidate could get a follow-up question by the moderator or be provided a time to rebut a candidate response, up to one minute, as directed by the moderator. Throughout the night, we may ask you lightning round questions, which will require a yes or no. We have red and green papers on your podiums, and you can hold those up so folks in the back, in case they can't hear you, they can see. Green means yes. Red means no. Y'all know that, right? And you may be given 15 seconds to clarify your answer, if it's yes or no. And a timekeeper, where's our timekeeper? Right here? Will signal when each candidate has only 10 seconds remaining and will ring a bell when time is up. And could you show what that bell sounds like? There you go. Now we have the rules for the audience by Carla.
Hello, everyone. I'm Carla Robinson. I'll just repeat. We really do want to get through as many questions as we can. So if you could help us out by keeping all your reactions to yourself, that would help a lot. You'll notice that there are some cards. If you don't hear a question... I'm sorry. How's that? Is that better? Okay. Do you want me to repeat what I just said? Okay. You'll notice there are cards that you can ask questions with if you feel that we have not. If you feel like there's a question that didn't get addressed, we'll do our best to get it in. We may not be able to. Never fear, there is another debate scheduled on May 9th. I believe that's already sold out, but it's going to be on Zoom. Oh, one other point. I just want to say, Mr. Anderson Oberman has requested that as we address him throughout the evening, we call him by his first name. So that's why we'll be doing that. Thank you.
Cindy is fine. All right. Well, we would allow, we would now like to invite you, Councilmember Cindy Bass, to the podium here, and Seth Anderson Oberman, right here. Thank you so much. And we'll begin now. Oh, I should mention that we did a coin flip a few moments ago, and the council member chose, and Seth will be first in responding to questions.
We're doing an intro?
Yes. Yes. We've asked that each candidate give an opening statement of 90 seconds, and Seth will start with you.
Thank you. My name is Seth Anderson Oberman. I'm a black working-class union organizer, public school parent, and a husband to my beautiful wife, Ayesha. I live in Germantown on the east side. I've lived 41 of my 52 years in this place. My wife and I chose to raise our kids here because we love this community. But seeing our neighborhoods change before our eyes has been painful because I know that if we don't act now, our children won't be able to, won't be able to afford to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in. Our neighbors are being displaced. Rents skyrocket across the district while property taxes balloon to subsidize abatements for wealthy developers. Seniors on fixed incomes are being left behind. Generations are living in the same two-bedroom apartment because it takes three incomes to pay rent. Every inch of land is being sold and filled with unaffordable apartment buildings and condos. Meanwhile, Germantown High School and Ada Lewis have been closed. Our libraries and rec centers have been defunded. A toxic gas plant was installed in one of the poorest parts of this city. And when our communities organized to oppose these things, our city councilperson didn't fight for us. I'm running because we deserve better. We deserve representation that shows up and listens, not just two months before an election, but year-round. We deserve leadership that will bring us together to fight for what we need: family-sustaining jobs, deeply affordable housing. Is that it?
Yes. That is your time. Thank you very much, Seth. Cindy, you have the floor. 90 seconds for your opening statement.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I thank you all for coming out. My name is Cindy Bass, and I'm the District Councilperson for the 8th District. And it's a pleasure and an honor to serve. I take it very, very seriously. And many of you know me, and I know you, from the community. You may have known me from my years as the president of East Mount Aerie Neighbors or from being active and a board member for the Pleasant Playground Advisory Council or as the, one of the organizers to help young folks get community jobs, city jobs, here in the 8th District. You may know me from the Youth Services Committee or the Mount Aerie Schools Committee or from working up and down the avenue on the 7100 block when it was needing to be developed and trying to make it into a place that was a destination. Because before we worked on it, for those who have been here for a minute, you remember it was a place where there was gambling on the sidewalk and drug dealing on the sidewalk and a whole lot of loitering on the sidewalk, and not much else. And so I've been working in this neighborhood for a very long time. And that was the work I did before I became a member of Philadelphia City Council. And so when my opponent says that I haven't been there, you know, it makes me wonder, well, where you been? You know, I have a new name for Seth. Seth, where you been? Because where have you been when we were out marching? Where have you been when we've been out talking? Where have you been?
Thank you, Cindy. We're going to move on.
Okay.
All right. First up, the number-one issue for Philadelphia voters: public safety.
Yes.
So we have a series of questions now for each of you on this topic. Seth, we're going to start with you for the first question. Criminal violence in our area is escalating daily. Guns in the hands of youth, robberies, and carjacking at gunpoint. We can't go out without being scared of what may happen. What are the exact plans and measures you would take to address this problem? And please be specific about how you would use your power in City Council to implement those. You have two minutes.
Well, thank you for that really important question. First of all, where we are now, we didn't just arrive here out of nowhere. You know, we are at this point because we've seen generations of structural violence and racism in our communities, whether it's through redlining, gentrification, disinvestment, mass incarceration. These are, this is all structural violence that's been done to our communities. And we don't fix violence in our communities without fixing the structural racism and violence that's been done to our communities. And that, in order to do that, we need deep investment because we know that safe communities are communities that have resources. So we need to invest in deeply affordable housing. We need to, you know, have good-paying, family-sustaining jobs in our communities. We need fully funded and resourced rec centers and libraries. And we need to, we need to approach this crisis of violence from a mental health approach. We need to expand mental health in our communities and access to mental health. These are the long-term solutions to the problems that we're facing. We cannot just fix these problems by policing our way out of this situation. It's certainly not an easy thing, but, you know, we're in this for the long haul, and we need to take care of people and invest in people. And that's, that's what we're going to do. And when I'm elected to City Council, we are going to have a comprehensive plan to address affordable housing in this district, to help people stay in their homes, to support workers organizing and winning living wages for themselves and their families. We're going to reorder the prioritize, we're going to reorder the priorities that have gotten us here in the first place and put human beings in our communities first.
Hold your applause, please. We're going to, would you like me to repeat the question, Cindy?
Sure.
Criminal violence in our area is escalating daily. Guns in the hands of youth, robberies, and carjacking at gunpoint. We can't go out without being scared of what may happen. What are the exact plans and measures you would take to address this problem? And please be specific about how you would use your power in City Council to implement them, and you have two full minutes.
Thank you. So the question is about violence in our communities. And so there are two parts to this. There's short-term remedies, and there are long-term remedies. And of course, long-term remedies include things like funding schools and making sure that people are well-paid and have stable employment and all of those sorts of things. But on the short term, the here and the now, what are we going to do? And what we have to do immediately so that while we're fixing the other things, folks feel safe about leaving their homes, going out, being able to be active in their community and engage, we need police. We have a shortage of police in the Philadelphia Police Department. That is not a secret. We also need the tools and technology of today, items like cameras. So now, I have worked with the Philadelphia Police Department, with our neighbors. We have a program called the Community Leadership Caucus in which we actually put cameras on individual homes in your neighborhood, particularly if you're in a high-dumping, high-crime area. So that's some of the work I've already done. But beyond that, we've also, it was my office that worked to put cameras in our rec centers to make sure that our young people are safe. And so there's only one person who's running citywide who doesn't support cameras and who doesn't support more police and actually supports defunding the police, and that's Seth. There's only one person out of all the mayoral candidates, out of all the city council candidates, there's one person who thinks that having less resources makes sense. And that's my opponent.
Seth, we're going to give you 30 seconds to respond to that.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't think more surveillance is the answer. I think we're already over-surveilled as a society. I think resources is the answer. We need good jobs. We need housing. We need fully funded schools. We need libraries and rec centers that are staffed and resourced. We need to be, we need to take care of our young people. We need to show our young people love, not criminalize our young people. So we stand differently on this question. You know, I, I must say that when I went to the 39th Police District meeting, the captain's meeting, I asked one of the officers there what she thought we needed, and she said, "Fund our schools."
Okay, we need to move on. Thank you, Seth. For our next question, we're going to start with you, Cindy.
Sure.
Okay. Do you agree that low literacy and street drugs are linked to violence? If so, would you divert funds from programs and departments that emphasize punishment to funding for programs that emphasize education, workforce development, mental health services, after-school programs, and other prevention programs? You have two minutes with the floor.
Well, absolutely. Low literacy rates and crime and violence are interlinked. There's no question about it. And as a member of Philadelphia City Council, the work that I've done to address this issue is to, number one, get our libraries funded so that they could open back up after the pandemic. And beyond that, make our libraries more of a place that people can come, get information, get jobs, get them off the street. I have the only, the only in the city of Philadelphia program that operates in a Philadelphia library, the Nicetown Tioga Branch, in which we open it up, make sure that people have job training, that they have literacy skills, that they can apply, apply for employment. We've already placed a number of people who we got off the street. So we have a street team that we work with through Taylor Memorial Baptist Church that goes out at night and talks to guys who are standing on corners and says, "If you want to get off of the street corner, come on in. We have a program for you." We direct them directly into our program that we started at the Nicetown Tioga Library. Have them come in, work with them, get them trained, get them skills, and get them off the street, doing drugs, selling drugs, creating mischief, creating mayhem, all of those sorts of things. This is the work that we've already done and will continue to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Your turn, Seth. You have two minutes.
Could you please repeat the question?
Yes. Do you agree that low literacy and street drugs are linked to violence? If so, would you divert funds from programs and departments that emphasize punishment to funding for programs that emphasize education, workforce development, mental health services, after-school programs, and other prevention programs? You have two minutes.
Yes. I think low literacy and violent crime are linked, but they're also linked by poverty. You know, and again, we have neighborhoods that have seen divestment for generations. We have folks who are being displaced from their communities. We have concentration of poverty around the city because we have no affordable housing and we have no good jobs for folks in our communities. So yes, it's not surprising to see all of these things happening in the same place. You know, I am 100% for investing in our communities and our neighborhoods and our people, and that's where we need to put the money. I think that's a much better use than putting it into, you know, programs of punishment and carceral solutions that fill our jails with kids. So I think it's interesting, though, because, you know, across the district, when I've gone around to speak to people, you know, I went to Barrett Playground, and I saw the rec center that was there that's been vacant for more than seven years, that's dilapidating and falling apart, and kids have no, no safe place to play. You know, I've gone to Happy Hollow, and I've seen the, you know, that, you know, they haven't gotten the resources they've asked for, and they need new equipment, and that place is falling down and filled with lead paint. So, you know, we need to invest the money in places so that our youth and our, and young working people have safe places to go before and after school on weekends. We need to invest, you know, the money in after-school programs, you know, and in our schools because certainly when, when, when kids are invested in, when people are cared for, they will thrive, and that has not been the case.
And Cindy, you have 30 seconds to respond to that.
Thank you. So thank you so much because I do want to point out that Barrett Playground is having a brand-new facility built, which we're doing through the rebuild program. It's been under construction probably for about the la, I would say, within the last six months. So I don't know if you missed that, when you went out on your tour at Barrett, but that's something that's happening right now. And so the building itself that was there was never dilapidated or abandoned. It's in really bad shape, but people were making do with what they had, and we were out there on the ground. And so I want to go back to my original statement. Seth, where were you? Where you been?
All right. We're going to talk now about Lincoln Drive. And this question will go to you first, Seth. And we're going to talk about Lincoln Drive and some of the reckless driving there that occurs. Would you support traffic calming measures? And if so, please specify which strategies. You have one minute.
Thank you. Yes, I would support traffic calming measures. I think we need a comprehensive plan throughout the district. We have some roads that we know are unsafe, where speed cameras could make a big difference. Lincoln Drive is one of those roads. If we can reduce fatal accidents by 50, you know, the city's plan is to reduce them by 50, down to zero by 2030. You know, we can, we can take a step toward that by putting cameras on Lincoln Drive. There's some other places in the district where we might want to look, Wissahickin Avenue and some other places where there are large numbers of high-speed crashes. I think we can also look at daylighting our intersections, you know, expanding the bike infrastructure in Mount Aerie and Germantown and Tioga. You know, I think we can look at creating bollards and bump outs and, you know, group, slow zones around schools, parks, and rec centers in order to calm traffic in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy, would you support traffic calming measures along Lincoln Drive? And if so, please specify which strategies. You have one minute.
Absolutely. I have supported traffic calming measures along Lincoln Drive, working with the Streets Commissioner. We've been working on this for quite some time to try to figure out what can be done. We've explored speed bumps, speed cushions, curb cuts, bump outs, all kinds of different things that could address the speed issues along Lincoln Drive. But one of the things I really want to point out is that I actually passed a bill which brings additional dollars back here to the city of Philadelphia for traffic calming. And so for every registration, for every vehicle registration which is sent to Harrisburg, it's the one occasion where money actually comes back to the city of Philadelphia in the form of speed calming measures for the Streets Department to the tune of about $3.5 to $5 million per year. And we intend to do more. Thank you.
We're going to go to the next round, the next issue, which is housing and development. Prices for homes, they have increased in Philadelphia, and the Northwest is not immune to this phenomenon. Rents are up as well. And so we're going to focus first on housing. This question is to you first, Cindy.
Yes.
What do you think is the best way to keep rents affordable in our city? And what plan would you implement? And how? You have one minute.
The city of Philadelphia has a real affordable housing crisis. And the problem lies with the city of Philadelphia. We are the responsible party to build the affordable housing that we need. The policy that we have right now, in which we have a one-off policy where we'll say to a developer, "Okay, well, you're going to put in, you know, a 40-unit or 50-unit apartment building, and if you throw in 10 affordable housing units, if you throw in, you know, four, five, six, we'll take that. Or if you don't want to do that, you can add money to the Housing Trust Fund and don't do any affordable housing units." That's totally unacceptable. The city of Philadelphia needs to build affordable housing units. It is our responsibility. We are never going to be able to address the numbers of people who need units. We know from the recent number of people who apply... We know from the recent number of people who applied for housing choice vouchers, it was something like 37,000 people. We are never going to be able to get to where we need to get to with the city of Philadelphia not taking the stand and building the housing itself.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome.
And the question to you, Seth, I can reread it. What do you think is the best way to keep rents affordable in our city, and what plan would you implement, and how? You have one minute.
Well, first, let me say that I think housing is a human right, and I think that the government has a responsibility to guarantee a safe and affordable place to live for every human being. I think we need a comprehensive plan, starting with a district housing analysis. I think we need to end the 10-year tax abatements immediately. I think we need to create incentives for deeply affordable housing, focus on low-income housing, on senior housing, and first-time home buyers. I think we need to look at mixed-income housing. I think there's a model in Seattle that's very interesting. It could be supported by public-private partnerships, including with a public bank in Philadelphia. I think we need to establish a path to homeownership for city workers, including city-backed low-interest loans and housing cost assistance. I think we need to keep people in their homes first, expand basic systems repair. For renters, I think we have to beef up eviction prevention, including right to counsel and mediation. I think we need to bolster LNI, we need more, to hire more inspectors to hold predatory landlords accountable for needed repairs.
Thank you, Seth. Onto the next question, and we'll start with you for this, Seth, as well. You'll have one minute to respond. In your opinion, can unoccupied city-owned housing be renovated to provide affordable housing, and what would you do to accomplish this?
Can unoccupied city-owned housing? Yes, I think we should, we should claim that housing and we should repurpose it, and we should make it affordable housing, and we should make housing for homeless people. You know, homelessness is spreading across the city as gentrification is moving throughout our city. So it's, it's, people are being forced out, people are being displaced, it's creating homelessness. We need to look at every single possible tool in our tool belt to, in our, to be able to help people find safe, affordable places to live, and if city has, the city has properties, we should look at those places.
Let me ask you, how would you specifically do that? How would you use your power as a city councilperson to do that?
Well, you know, a councilperson has powers when it comes to zoning. I think we can do that, and I think we can look at building some public-private partnerships, you know, to invest in, you know, rehabbing some of the buildings that are currently unoccupied and dilapidating and providing them as low-income affordable housing and homeless housing, housing for the homeless.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, now for you, I'll repeat the question.
Thank you.
In your opinion, can unoccupied city-owned housing be renovated to provide affordable housing, and what would you do to accomplish this?
Well, absolutely. Affordable housing is, as I said just a moment ago, I believe it's the city of Philadelphia's responsibility to provide it. I'm looking forward to working with the new mayoral administration to get that done, and it can happen through transfer ordinance, through surplus funds. We've had additional budget surplus for the last eight years to the tune of over $1 billion. The funds are available, the city of Philadelphia has the funding available to be able to do what needs to be done. But let me help Seth out a little bit here, because we don't need zoning, like zoning has nothing to do, if a house is already a house, and a lot of people, you know, if you don't understand zoning, you might not know, but if a house is already zoned to be a house, then you don't have to use the power of being a district councilperson to rezone it. It's already zoned to be a single-family domicile, and it could stay as it is.
Seth, would you like to respond to that? You have 30 seconds.
You know, I would like to say, yeah, that, you know, had we done something like they did in West Philly, where they passed a zoning overlay to mandate the building of affordable housing, 20% affordable at 40% AMI, had we done that 12 years ago, we'd be in a different position than we are today. You know, tens of thousands of people across this district might have affordable places to live who currently don't. So I think that's something we need to look at in this district, and I'm wondering why we haven't done that already.
Can I respond, just really quickly?
15 seconds, Cindy.
Okay, I do need to say that that was just done in West Philadelphia, and it hasn't produced any significant number of affordable housing units, so just to be clear on that.
All right, we're going to do the final question in this area for housing. Cindy, will you commit to prioritizing the creation of low-income senior slash older adult housing in the 8th District, and what specific power does a councilmember have to expand housing options for such residents? Two minutes.
My, my primary, you know, listen, whenever I talk to folks about the type of housing that we need in the 8th Council District, it's really two types. One is senior affordable housing, and one is housing for those who are disabled, affordable housing for that community as well. So that's something that we have been working on, it's on our radar. Whenever we have an opportunity to talk to folks about what their projects are going to be, we ask them specifically for those two types of housing in our district, because they are, we are in desperate need, not just in the 8th District, but throughout the entire city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, and I think you took about a minute for that. Did she tell him? Did she take? Two, it is two minutes, thank you. Will you commit, Seth, to prioritizing the creation of low-income senior, older housing, adult housing in the 8th District, and what specific power do you believe a councilmember has to expand housing options for such residents? Two minutes.
Absolutely, I would. I think it's a huge priority, and I think it's interesting, the, you know, the community had a proposal for low-income senior housing at the YWCA in Germantown, and that proposal was scuttled. It wasn't even considered. And, you know, the councilperson insisted on market-rate housing along Germantown Avenue. And I think that's a shame, because we need, we need low-income senior housing in this district, and that was a prime opportunity to build some. So yes, I would, I would support building low-income senior housing in the district. I think the Y would make a great place for that, and, and we would look again to find investment, you know, public-private partnerships and moving city resources and support from a public bank to build social housing that's low-income senior housing. I think we would look at lots of different tools and ways, you know, to try to make sure that our seniors had affordable places to live.
Thank you, and Cindy, you can respond if you want to this for 30 seconds.
Well, I do want to just add briefly in reference to the Germantown Y, that the idea that affordable housing, affordable senior housing at that location was, was not acceptable. There was an effort to move that project into another space around the corner at the Old Fulton School, so that was part of the conversation as to where would be a great place to put additional senior housing in the neighborhood. So it's not as if there wasn't a need or a request or a want for senior housing, but when you're talking about development, placement matters. What you put where makes a difference. And so that was one of the things that we were working on, is to move it over to the Old Fulton School, but Seth hasn't, you know, Seth wasn't around. Seth, where you been? So, you know, you weren't a part of the conversation and would not have known that, so.
All right, thank you. And we have a red card and a green card in front of you. We have a quick lightning round for you. Do you support rent control, yes or no? Do you support rent control, yes or no? And 15 seconds, Seth, why?
I sup, you know, I think it depends on your definition of rent control, but I support targeted rent controls, starting with corporate landlords, ask to support rent stabilization. I think it's an important tool in our toolkit to keep, you know, to help stabilize our communities.
Thank you very much. Cindy, 15 seconds, why, no?
So growing up, my mother was a small landlord. We had two properties that she rented out. One was, actually, both of them were $300 apiece in the 70s and 80s. And so if someone lost their job, if someone couldn't pay their rent, if something broke, whatever happened in someone else's household was actually a disaster in our household, which was run off of $600 a month in rent. And that's why small landlords can't accept the burden of rent control, but other things...
Okay, we need to move on, thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to our next category of question, where now we're going to be focusing on development. Recent high-density development projects are having a distinct impact on the Northwest, which has historically had more open space than downtown neighborhoods. The next few questions focus on how residents feel about that. Seth, we'll start with you. You'll have one minute to respond. Byright Apartment Developments in Germantown, Mount Airy, and Chestnut Hill have given local citizens, many of whom have lived in these neighborhoods for years, little opportunity to have a meaningful, meaningful voice in this building boom. What will you do to make communities more a part of the development process?
Yeah, I mean, this is a huge issue, let me say. I mean, I live a block off of Germantown Avenue, and there's four different large apartment complexes going up within a three-block radius of us. You know, they're renting before, between, for between $1,800 and $2,500 a month in a neighborhood where the fa, where the median family income is $36,000 for a family of four. So I don't have an issue necessarily with, I'm not anti-development, but we need to be building deeply affordable housing. None of what's being built is affordable for the people who live in our communities, and that's the problem. So, you know, what I talked about was a zoning overlay that would require deeply affordable housing, you know, as a, as a precondition for construction. You know, this is important, and we also need to involve the community in the first place and come up with a, with a housing plan that the community weighs in on and gives voice to, and then we need to find developers who have a stake in our community, who want to help us build that plan.
Thank you, Seth. Cindy, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please, yeah.
Byright Apartment Developments in Germantown, Mount Airy, and Chestnut Hill have given local citizens, many of whom have lived in these neighborhoods for years, little opportunity to have a meaningful voice in this building boom. What will you do to make communities more a part of the development process? You have one minute.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that we have done, and actually, let me step back for one second, because I think that everyone is incredibly frustrated that the neighborhood that most of us moved into is changing so rapidly with the number of units that are, that are being built. And so the units that are being built, there's a, I think, a perception that as a district councilperson, you can decide, well, this is going to be built, or that's not going to be built. It doesn't work that way. It goes by what the zoning code allows, and so if you have a space that will allow you to build, say, a 40-unit apartment building, it's already zoned properly, then guess what? They can go around me, they can go around you, they don't have to have an RCO meeting, they don't have to talk to the community, and this is wrong. So one of the things that we have done is brought together all of the RCOs in our district, we meet on a regular basis, and we talk about zoning issues and what we can do to get in front of them so that we can attack this problem as a group.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Cindy, I'm going to start with you for this next question. How will you balance the needs of housing versus preservation of historic building stock and the character of the Northwest neighborhoods? You have one minute.
You can do both. You can have wonderfully preserved real estate, housing units in the Northwest, and you can also have new construction that fits the mold and the model of what people expect when they come to Germantown, Mount Airy, Chestnut Hill. What does it look like? There is a very particular and distinct feel for what the Northwest is and what the look of real estate is versus if you're in Fishtown, or if you're in Northern Liberties, or in Center City, and so I believe you can have both.
Thank you. And Seth, I will repeat the question for you. How will you balance the needs of housing versus preservation of historic building stock and the character of the Northwest neighborhoods? You have one minute.
I think we need a moratorium on demolition, you know, and I think that we need to expand historical designation across our district. I think it's a tool to fight back against gentrification, so I think that's very important. You know, I, I believe that we need to build properties that are in, that are consistent with our communities and the architectural, you know, character of our communities, and again, I think the community needs to weigh in on this process and needs to have a voice in this process. And so I think, you know, the whole, the whole way in which things are approved and zoned needs to be reformed, and we need to give the community a meaningful voice in this process.
Thank you, Seth. Cindy, I'm going to ask you, well, sorry about that, we'll move on to the next one. How will you balance the needs?
I wanted to...
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to add something to Seth's comments, which was that he mentioned that we needed a demolition moratorium, in which I actually have a bill for a demolition moratorium in Philadelphia City Council right now, so.
Thank you. I was actually going to ask you that. Thank you. Okay, so shall we have, move on to the lightning rounds? Okay. Will you work with community groups on prudent changes to city zoning codes, yes or no? Thank you. Does Northwest Philadelphia need higher minimum parking requirements?
Minimum parking, oh.
Yes.
Thank you. Minimum parking requirements are the number of car, parking spots needed for big developments. If elected, would you support a tax on vacant properties?
Well, let me ask a question.
It's qualified.
Yeah, vacant properties are already, there's still real estate tax on properties...
And this would be a surcharge, a vacant property tax.
So a surcharge, an additional tax.
Yes. Thank you.
We're moving on to the next round of questions, and this time we're focused on economic and community development, business corridors here. What specific plans, and we're starting with you, Cindy, what specific plans do you have to revitalize our business corridors, particularly the ones surrounding Germantown and Shelton Avenues? You have 90 seconds to respond.
Well, thank you. So there's a lot that we need to do on our business corridors. When we look at the district, which includes commercial corridors such as Chestnut Hill, Mount Airy, Germantown, Nice Town, Tioga, parts of Olney, parts of Logan, parts of West Oak Lane, parts of Feltonville, and parts of North Philadelphia, we have a lot of commercial corridors. And so we've been working, organizing our commercial corridors, working with the entities that run those commercial corridors, whether in North Philadelphia, if it's Ron Hinton and the Allegheny West Foundation and Thea Martin, or at the top of the hill and the Chestnut Hill Business Association. We've been working with every organization to work with them to help find out, what is it that you need? What resources do you need from city government to make this better? We have actually brought in and done several tours, I believe we've done several on each commercial corridor with the city's Commerce Department. So they're the frontline in terms of providing additional resources to be able to get things done on those corridors, whether it's facade improvements, camera programs, cleanup services, you know, safe, additional safety measures. These are the kinds of things that we've been working to bring and have done, I think, overall, a successful job at, throughout the 8th District.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you the same question, Seth. What specific plans do you have to revitalize our business corridors, particularly the ones surrounding Germantown and Shelton Avenues? 90 seconds.
Well, I think it's a, you know, there's a bit of a sad history here with the Germantown Special Services District. So, you know, we saw, you know, a business community that wanted to take care of its own, of its own corridor, keep it safe and clean, and they were overridden, and a, you know, Germantown Special Services District with a board that was appointed by you, Cindy, you know, took it and ran it and taxed, you know, collected a tax from the, from the, from the business owners, and then didn't clean up, and then that money was embezzled, you know, up to $125,000. So, you know, I think, you know, this is not the kind of thing that we need. You know, we need to support our local businesses, we need to meet with the business owners, we need to support business improvement districts. I think there are two that are working, one well in, in Mount Airy, one in Chestnut Hill. We could look at, you know, creating a functioning business improvement district in Germantown, maybe one along Broad Street. So, you know, but the first part of that is sitting down and meeting with small business owners and seeing what they need. The other part of that is, we need to, you know, this is connected to, you know, to creating good-paying jobs in our communities, because that's what's going to support a business corridor. So supporting workers' rights to organize unions, you know, supporting jobs in our communities that are going to pay decent wages, that's going to put money in people's pockets, that's going to support a business corridor.
Thank you. Did you want to respond, Cindy?
I certainly did. So I just wanted to address...
In 30 seconds.
I just wanted to address your statement, Seth, around the GSSD, and there, there's one person who's responsible for what has happened at the GSSD. There's one person, and it's Ingrid Shepherd. So when you mentioned that I did the appointments for the GSSD, I want to make it clear that I have, over my time in council, probably appointed, supported the appointments, or voted on appointments for probably 100 different positions, all in a day's work.
Thank you, Cindy.
And one, one off.
Next question, and this is for you, Cindy, you have one minute to answer. You have one minute to answer. "What is your plan to redevelop the old YWCA and town hall buildings in Germantown?"
So, they need development, obviously. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time. We've had incredible...an incredible amount of difficulty with getting this development happening through the Redevelopment Authority and through PIDC. But I do want to state for the record that development in the city of Philadelphia takes time. I mean, we've been sitting on land throughout the city that we've been trying to develop, hoping to develop, you know, working on developing, whether it's Penn's Landing or, you know, other projects throughout the city of Philadelphia. You know, listen, Penn's Landing has been worked on for like thirty years now. And so, while we have no intention that it's going to take this long, we certainly have hit a speed bump when it comes to getting the support that we needed out of the different city departments to make this development happen. So, this is something that we're on, we're going to continue to stay on, and we're going to get it done.
Thank you. Seth, I'll repeat the question for you. You'll have one minute to respond. "What is your plan to redevelop the old YWCA and town hall buildings in Germantown?"
Well, I like the original plan that was proposed. I like it being senior, you know, low-income senior housing. I think that we need it in the community. I think they also had artist lofts on the first floor. I think, you know, and if you think about the Center in the Park, which is right next to it, you know, it would make perfect sense. You know, folks could live there and go right next door to Center in the Park, which is just a jewel in our neighborhood. And also, then, that way, we could preserve the back parking lot, which is right now threatened if the development that, you know, goes forward that doesn't grant Center in the Park, you know, use of that parking lot. So, then seniors who are coming to Center in the Park wouldn't be able to access the park or access the entrance to Center in the Park. So, let's, you know, let's do what we originally talked about, low-income senior housing, you know, with access to a jewel right there.
Thank you. Cindy, shall I repeat the question?
No, no. I did want to just address, you know, the original proposal, as Seth put it.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay. And so, I do want to make it absolutely clear that something that's very important to me is to ensure that development looks like the neighborhood and development looks like Philadelphia and that development is inclusive of African-American and Latino supports and developers and participation, which was not in the original proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next category of questions. Many of the comments we got were about how city government works and doesn't. Our next round of questions focus on the need for transparent and effective government. Seth, this question is for you. You'll have thirty seconds to answer. "If elected, what would be your first legislative goal? And how would you judge your success after four years?"
I think my first legislative goal, I mean, considering the deep housing crisis that we're in, in the district and across the city, I think my first legislative goal would be to pass a zoning overlay, similar to what they did in West Philadelphia, but looking at the specific, you know, looking at a housing analysis and basing that on conditions in our neighborhoods in the Northwest. That would be the first thing that I would do. And...
Thank you. Cindy, shall I repeat the question?
My first legislative priority, I already had my first, but...
If reelected.
Uh-huh. So, when reelected, I have a full slate of items that I would like to continue to work on, whether it's stop-and-goes, which are nuisance businesses, which increase addiction. These are businesses that you don't really see, well, actually, you don't see at all. In Chestnut Hill, you don't see them in Mount Airy, but these are businesses that have been pushing addiction products in black and brown communities for a very long time. So, I'd like to strengthen that law. I'd also like to continue to do work around the bill or resolution we recently introduced in council around the environment of our schools and getting support for that.
Thank you very much. Cindy, we'll start with you here. There are about ten communities in the Eighth District. How will your office be structured to equitably manage realtime communication and transparency in addressing their various priorities and concerns? And you could talk about how your office is currently structured or could be restructured. You have one minute.
Well, one of the things that we do in reference to our office structure so that we can make sure we're out and about and connect to the community is, four times a month, we're out with either Coffee with the Councilwoman or a Chat and Chew with the Councilwoman. That's why I actually come out, we sit down, we have coffee. Anybody who has any issue at all can come, sit, talk. You know, we spend as much time as we need to to talk about what are the issues and address these issues that are of concern to you. And so, we, right now, just last night, as a matter of fact, we had a Chat and Chew at Zion Baptist Church in North Philadelphia. The week before last, I think it was, we had our most recent Coffee with the Councilwoman at Center in the Park. Besides that, we just are introducing a piece of legislation tomorrow to reopen the town hall, city hall, in the North Philadelphia part of the district that was open and closed because of some environmental issues. We also have a district office at forty-four thirty-nine A Germantown Avenue.
Thank you, Cindy. Seth, same question to you. There are about ten communities in the Eighth District. How will your office be structured to equitably manage realtime communication and transparency in addressing their various priorities and concerns? You have one minute.
Thank you. We would have our office, certainly, in the southern part of the district that has been historically the most neglected. So, we're talking about Nice Town, Tioga, Logan. Our office would be in one of those places, in Central. You know, we would hire folks to help with constituent services who are respected in the community. And we prioritize having, you know, professional staff and equitable distribution of constituent services. One of the things that we've heard, as we've been around the district, talking to folks in every corner, is that folks are incredibly frustrated with the constituent services that they currently receive from our councilperson. You know, there has been, you know, over and over again, it's been said, there's been a lack of follow-up, there's been a lack of broken promises. And so, you know, we would bolster constituent services and make sure that folks have access to their councilperson and city hall.
Thank you, Seth. Cindy, would you like to respond to that? You'll have thirty seconds.
Yes, thank you. And so, I just wanted to mention to Seth, I don't know if you're aware, when you said that you would have an office in the southern part of the district, forty-four thirty-nine A is a southern part of the district. It's in Nice Town, so we already have an office there. And also, the other office that we were talking about opening up is... the city office is in the North Philadelphia part of the district. So, we do have two locations in the lower end of the district where there's an incredible amount of need. And also, beyond that, I have a background primarily in constituent services. So, I take it very, very seriously, which is why I want to be out with Coffee with the Councilwoman.
Thank you. Okay. Cindy, we'll start with you for this question. You'll have one minute to respond. "Residents have longstanding complaints that the practice of council manic prerogative invites corruption, encourages pay-to-play, and results in longstanding vacancies and commercial corridor blight. If elected, would you support ending council manic prerogative? And if not, would you consider changing it? And if so, how?" You have one minute.
Sure. Council manic prerogative, I think, has been somewhat misunderstood, to be honest. Council manic prerogative, in my opinion, is community prerogative. Because if you have a councilperson who is taking their direction and their cues in terms of what they want in their community directly from their councilperson, then they have every say about what is going to happen or what is not going to happen in their community. Anyone who's ever been in a meeting with me knows that I have always said, you don't have to have things in your neighborhood that you don't want. Where there's an opportunity for us to get in front of a development, when we do RCO meetings, if you don't want the project, we don't want the project. If you want the project, then we want the project. And it's really as simple as that.
Thank you. Seth, you also have one minute. Shall I repeat the question?
Sure.
"Residents express longstanding complaints that the practice of council manic prerogative invites corruption, encourages pay-to-play, and results in longstanding vacancies and commercial corridor blight. If elected, would you support ending council manic prerogative? And if not, how would you change it?"
Yes. It does invite corruption and pay-to-play, and I would be part of a coalition to end it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to a lightning round. Yes-no cards. "Would you support an open ward system?"
Absolutely.
Yes or no? You want to use your green cards?
Oh, sorry.
Your green and red cards?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Cindy, do you support an open ward system?
I support an opportunity for the committee people to weigh in, absolutely. And we have several here tonight who can vouch for that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
"Should the city continue tax abatements? Yes or no?" Okay. Lastly, "Should the city's big nonprofit institutions have to pay payments in lieu of taxes? Yes or no?" Thank you.
So, we're going to move on to a section where we provide individual questions to each of the candidates. And I'm going to have an individual question to you, Cindy.
Sure.
"You have on your desk draft legislation written by the Philadelphia City Planning Commission along with the newly-approved North Germantown zoning map. Will you commit to submitting that legislation to city council by May twenty-third and introducing it on May twenty-fifth so that it can be enacted before the June recess? You have one minute to answer and to explain."
Absolutely. I'd like to just...we did prepare a written response because we saw that question online earlier. So, I do want to, just to make sure I get all of the elements in, read my response, if that's okay with you. "My zoning and legislative staff members are currently reviewing the Germantown North Bill with city planning staff to evaluate the changes in the current bill versus the new bill as prepared by city planning with WCGN's final suggestions. The original recommendations that your committee submitted were comprised of a large number of properties within your organization's boundaries. These properties appear to be ninety percent spot-zoned, and city planning advised me that your suggestions would be impossible to implement. Due to their statement, I requested them to prepare maps reflecting your proposed changes. When that lengthy process was complete, it was apparent the map was completely spot-zoned. I asked the city planning to work with your committee to produce a more viable option. Your committee later collaborated with them through several iterations..."
Thank you, Cindy. We need to move on.
Sure.
Seth, this next question is for you. You also will have two minutes to respond. "You've been endorsed by the Working Families Party, and in the distant past, you did have ties with the Communist Party. How will you balance the needs of low-income and working families with those of the middle and higher-income residents who live in the Eighth District?"
So, let me just say, I registered as a Democrat at the age of eighteen to vote for Jesse Jackson. I was incredibly excited about that election. And I have...I'm a registered Democrat. Now, I'm running as a Democrat. I have mobilized thousands and thousands and thousands of voters over twenty-five years to elect Democratic candidates. I joined the Young Communist League at an early age, twenty-one, because I grew up in Germantown during the Rizzo era. I had seen, you know, my friends and their older brothers harassed and beaten by police, you know, and we saw the Rodney King verdict and what that meant for me. And, you know, the Young Communist League was out in the community and was organizing for the first civilian police review board in the city. And I was inspired by Angela Davis, I was inspired by W.B. Du Bois, I was inspired by Paul Robeson. And that led me to that work. And for the past twenty-four years, I've been a union organizer. And, you know, I haven't been to a party meeting in more than fifteen years, but I'm very proud of that history. And we have a proud history of that in this country because, you know, the Communists in this country led the fight against lynching. The Communists led the fight for unemployment insurance, social security. And so, there's a proud history of that in this country, and I don't shy away from that. I'm proud of it.
Thank you. And if you could hold your applause. Please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. And just to be clear, I was asked, each candidate will get five minutes total to answer these individual questions. So, the time has been apportioned accordingly for each candidate. So, there may be differences in questions, but the total amount will be five. Your next question, Cindy, has two minutes for a response, okay?
Okay.
"What projects remain unfinished or unresolved in your district and why?"
I would say the project that remains unresolved or unfinished at this point are projects that are through the city's rebuild program. And so, the rebuild program was supposed to be a five-hundred-million-dollar investment in our parks, recreation centers, and libraries. That investment has not come to fruition in the way that we would have liked. It was not the robust program that we were expecting. And so, when we have a center, as my opponent mentioned earlier, Barrett Playground, you know, which is being built, and as the costs are escalating, as the cost of the project is increasing day by day because of supply chain issues and material issues, you know, this is something that has become very frustrating. I recently held a hearing to ask the Kenny administration exactly, when is this going to happen? And furthermore, I actually, you may remember from last year, we had a conversation with the administration about rebuild funding overall when it was found out that the Eighth Council District was shorted about half of what every other district received or every other district in need received for funding for rebuild projects. So, we're not afraid, I'm not afraid, to get in and fight for our district, fight for our projects, and make sure that things get done.
Yeah. And I have a quick follow-up because you did talk about the YWCA a little bit earlier, but some residents believe that that project stalled because of some bad politics. I want you to respond to that, and then what are the plans going forward?
That, in my opinion, that project has stalled when it should not have stalled. And so, this is something that, again, has come through the Redevelopment Authority where certain people, certain projects are given preferential treatment. There can be no question about it, where you have a project with a developer in South Philadelphia or other parts of the city. And I'll just put it out there, people can do their research, and I'd be happy to talk about it further, where you have people who have been able to sit on a parcel of real estate for ten years, untouched while they get their financial package together, while they get all of their, you know, work together, while they work with the city of Philadelphia. They can take their time, but for some reason, there seems to be a lack of patience when it comes to black and brown developers.
Thank you, Cindy. Seth, this next question is for you. You will have one minute to respond. "A district council member must understand the city budget, zoning rules, and the legislative process. What previous work have you done to ensure that you understand this responsibility and could hit the ground running?"
Well, I'll certainly have a lot to learn, right? Like, that's clear. I've been a union organizer for twenty-four years. And so, in that capacity, what I have done is I've brought people together to identify our common points of interest and fight for what we need. Those are the skills that I'll bring to this work. You know, there will be a lot that I'll have to learn about how the city functions, but it's not all, you know, it's not all new. I was also political director for the American Federation of Teachers, New Jersey, for seven years. And we lobbied, and we, you know, met with our elected officials to fight for funding for our schools. And we know how that process works. I'll be doing it on the inside, so I won't have to lobby myself. I'll be able to fund public schools. So, that part's good. But there will be, there will certainly be stuff that I'll have to learn.
Thank you, Seth. And again, please, hold your applause. Thank you.
Sure.
Cindy, you have two minutes for this next one.
Do I get a chance to reply?
These are individual questions.
Okay.
If you want to wrap it into your response, you know.
I will.
Two minutes. "Some of your constituents believe, Cindy, that there has been a lack of transparency and mismanagement by folks working in the Eighth District. For instance, the director of a special services district that was controlled, but you controlled, recently pleaded guilty to fraud for stealing a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. How would you help rebuild trust?"
Well, I want to say the narrative that I controlled, that I control any of the...
In two minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay. That I control any of the special services districts. So, there are three districts within the Eighth Council District. There's Germantown, there was Germantown, the special services district, there's the Mount Airy bit, and then there's the Chestnut Hill bit. But this perception that I control any of them, I do all of the appointments for all of them. The lack of... The lack of, or actually the board meetings, I can tell you that I rarely attend a board meeting for these organizations, but work with them to try to make sure that they're on point and doing what it is that they're supposed to be doing. Clearly, GSSD was a problem, but when it worked, it worked well. My focus now is on the future and getting that organization together, getting services back in Germantown. We desperately need it, and it has to happen. But the other thing I wanted to say, just following up on Seth's comments about, you know, going forward, two questions. One is Seth mentioned, you mentioned that you would be able to lobby, you know, you didn't have to lobby yourself, and that you would fully fund the schools. I'd like to know how you plan on doing that, exactly what's your plan or formula to actually make these things happen? Because a lot of what we hear sounds great, it sounds wonderful. But the reality of it is, if it was easy to do, it would have been done. The second thing I just want to mention is that, as Seth mentions, that he has a lot to learn. There's going to be a lot of change throughout the City of Philadelphia in the coming year. And so we're going to have a new mayor, we're going to have a new Philadelphia City Council president, we're going to have a majority of new members. This is not the time to elect someone who doesn't have any basis of knowledge and is not connected in any way.
Please hold your applause.
And is not connected in any way. How many neighborhood groups have you been a part of? How many marches have you been on? How many, how many homes have you sat in? I'm not talking about since you started running. I'm talking about before you were a candidate.
Thank you, we're moving on. 30 seconds to respond, Seth.
I was born on a picket line.
No, no, audience, please hold your response.
I've been doing this my whole life. I've been out on the struggle, on picket lines, on marches, rallies, organizing them. My entire life. My entire life.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. Seth, this question is for you, you have two minutes to respond. Some 8th District constituents believe that Philadelphia had been starved of revenue for years, and that Center City began growing again, thanks in part to the development that was spurred by tax abatements. You have said you will not take money from big developers. How important do you think development is to the city's tax base and its economic success?
I think to the extent that it creates good-paying jobs in our communities, it's important. I think development is important. As I said, we need deeply affordable housing. We can't build that without working with developers. But the tax abatements have hurt our, have hurt our neighborhoods, have hurt our communities. They've robbed our schools of the resources that they need, and they've increased property taxes on existing homeowners to subsidize the abatements. They're harmful, they need to be ended. So, you know, I just want to be very clear on that. You know, I'm not opposed to working with developers. We have to, you know, development is part of how we do things. Cities are living, breathing organisms, and developers are part of that process. And I look forward to working with developers who have a commitment to our neighborhoods and our communities and want to work with us to build the vision that the community wants.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to another issue, which is public schools. As you know, I mean, schools have been closing because of asbestos.
Don't I know?
It's a serious issue. And so the recent discovery of asbestos at Mount Aries Henry School and its subsequent closure is yet another example of the impact of chronic underfunding in the district and how it impacts students, teachers, and families. How will you use your role in council to advocate for the needs of our public school students? And Cindy, we'll start with you, one minute.
So you should know that, right now, we're building a new school in the 8th Council District, TMPiers, at 23rd and Indiana. And so that didn't just happen just because, you know, there were extra funds laying around. I did a tour of the school probably about three years ago. And when we went into the school, what we saw was open asbestos. We saw lead that was in the form of chip paint. We saw bathroom facilities that were almost commingling with the lunchroom. We saw conditions that were absolutely unacceptable. And I said to Dr. Height, shut it down, shut it down right now. These are unacceptable conditions, our children should not be here in any way, shape, or form. And so they were able to move those children out and get a new school building underway. And so, right now, TMP, Henry is going through something similar, which is being...
Thank you, Cindy. Seth, same question to you. The recent discovery of asbestos at Mount Aries Henry School and its subsequent closure is yet another example of the impact of chronic underfunding and how it impacts students, teachers, and families in the district. How will you use your role in council to advocate for the needs of our public school students? You have one minute.
Well, what's happening at Henry, and what happened at Gratz and four other schools this year, is criminal and completely avoidable, right? We've known for decades that our schools need massive, massive repairs. And, you know, the school district hasn't put forth a plan. You know, they need, they need to put forth a plan. The school district needs to put forth a plan. That, and then we need to direct resources from the city, from the state, and from the federal government, you know, to rebuild our schools and retrofit, and remediate the mold, the lead, the asbestos, the vermin. We know that we need, you know, $5 billion worth of capital improvements to make our schools safe. I think we can all agree that that is a huge, huge priority. I'm a public school parent myself, my wife is a teacher. This is incredibly, incredibly important. We are failing our kids, and we cannot do that.
Thank you. The next question is also for you, Seth, we'll start with you. You'll have one minute to respond. Where do you stand on charter versus regular public schools? What is your plan for supporting both types?
You know, I was a charter school teacher organizer with the American Federation of Teachers. You know, where I helped teachers organize unions in their schools so that they could advocate for the needs of their students without fear of reprisal, without fear of being fired, without intimidation from their employers. So I think that having organized teachers is a really important frontline in the fight for students, in the fight for funding. And that when we break teachers' unions, we take out one of the most organized voices for the needs of our public school students and the needs of our schools. So, you know, I certainly don't blame parents for deciding, you know, where they send their children. But, you know, I support, I support increasing funding for all schools. And I support trying to unite parents across the district to fight for funding for all schools.
Thank you, moving on. Cindy, same question for you, one minute. Where do you stand on charter versus regular district public schools? What is your plan for supporting both types?
Well, I support what works. And so I support our public schools, which are operating and providing supports and services and doing a good job of educating our young people. And I also support charter schools, who have, when they originally applied for their charter, said that they were going to provide a quality education, and that is what the expectation is. And so I support both. We need to actually address charter schools that are underperforming. If they are not performing up to par, then we need to have those addressed because they said that they will be able to provide a quality education. And if they're not, then obviously that's a problem. Also, on the public school side, same thing. We have a charter, a public school in my district that was going to be taken over by what I would consider a very well, if not high-performing, charter school provider. And one of our candidates for mayor and some other folks opposed it. And they were the lowest-performing school in the City of Philadelphia at 0% math proficiency and 8% English proficiency. And that's where they are today.
Thank you.
After this was not allowed to happen.
Thank you. We'll now move to a lightning round with a yes or no question, if you want to grab your cards. Quick question. Would you support free access to regional rail for Philadelphia public school students? Thank you.
So we have some audience questions, and I'm going to give, and split them with you. We'll go back and forth a little bit. And we'll give you one minute to answer each of these community questions. And these came from folks in the room today. So they're paying attention and listening, are you not? Y'all still awake? All right. The first one is, what are your plans, and we were just talking about schools. So what are your plans to hold the school district to the promise of better management for schools? And we're specifically talking about the management. And Cindy, one minute, we'll start with you.
Are we talking about the environmental management of the buildings? Okay.
There it is.
Okay. So Philadelphia City Council just introduced a resolution. My colleague and Councilman Isaiah Thomas did an excellent job on a resolution that he introduced, which would basically take the hands and responsibility for environmental conditions away from the school district and into an entity that some other, like, an entity that actually could perform that service so that we would have complete and total focus in the school district on education. That the building itself, the maintenance of the building, the condition of the building, that we would actually be able to work with a provider who could actually provide the services that are necessary to make sure that the building is operating in a way that doesn't put children and teachers and faculty at harm. I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of that resolution, and will be moving in it in City Council.
And Seth, question, the same question for you from our audience. What are your plans to hold the school district to the promise of better management for schools? And according to the questioner, it's related to the environment, you have one minute.
Well, we need to get the funds to our schools that they need, that's one thing. I mean, we have to hold management accountable. We need to hold the school district accountable to provide a plan. They have not done that. We need a detailed analysis of what schools need repairs, we need priorities, we need that, you know, triaged into, you know, most urgent, like, prioritized into a list. We need that plan. It's hard to know what to do without a plan. So the school district has to produce the plan. And then we need to end the tax abatements. We need to collect payments in lieu of profits from the mega, or payments in lieu of taxes from the mega nonprofits, so we can collect more money at the city level to be able to fund this work. And we need to lobby from the state and the federal government, that this is an emergency, this is a crisis, and we need the money to repair our schools now.
Thank you, Seth. Next question, you'll also have a minute to respond to this, and we'll start with you, Seth. What do you know about the conditions at the city jail? And do you support creating an ombudsman position with subpoena powers to address the grievances of the people there?
That's a really good question. I don't know a lot about the conditions at the city jail, I'm going to be honest. So, you know, I would work with, you know, groups to understand that question more.
Thank you. Cindy, you have a minute to respond. What do you know about the conditions of, the conditions at the city jail? And do you support the creation of an ombudsman position with subpoena powers to address the grievances of people there?
Well, if you watch the news, read the papers, then you know that our city jails are in trouble, they're in turmoil. And so we've had more homicides in city facilities in the last year, year and a half, than probably in the last five to 10 years. There is something really wrong. We know that they have staffing shortages. We know that there's not the level of support and staff that needs to be in place to operate these facilities. We know that people have been locked in their cells for, you know, like, for more than a 24-hour period, which is absolutely inhumane. And so there's a lot that needs to be done, but I would certainly support an ombudsman, I'm sorry, can't talk, position to be able to address the grievances that are happening out within the prison system, because they need to be addressed.
Thank you. I want to, this next question also from the audience, one minute, Cindy. Would you consider creating an overlay district like Darrell Clark did in Strawberry Mansion to control the new development?
Absolutely.
Do you want to, so yes?
Yes, it's something that we're working on now. It is something that we've been talking to his office, the City Council technical staff, and trying to find some remedy for that.
Thank you.
Trying to do the same thing.
And Seth, you have one minute if you want. Would you consider creating an overlay district like Darrell Clark did in Strawberry Mansion to control the new development?
Yes, I think I've answered that already, but I'll say it again, yes. You know, to mandate deeply affordable housing and also additional parking on site.
Thank you. Thank you. This next question also from the audience, we'll start with you, Seth. How do you plan to help the entrepreneurs who are trying to open a business and dealing with corrupt people in the RCO? Not sure which RCO they're referring to.
How do I plan to help entrepreneurs who are opening a business?
Why don't we just say, how do you plan to help the entrepreneurs who are trying to open a business?
Well, I mean, I think the city, you know, should offer programs for folks who are trying to start up businesses, particularly, you know, black and brown entrepreneurs in our communities. You know, one thing that I think we could do is we could offer startup services, legal services, and connect entrepreneurs with existing successful entrepreneurs to help them get off the ground. I think that that is a program that we could initiate in the community. I'm sure there would be a lot of support for it, it would help build up our commercial corridors as well. I also support offering a tax incentive for small businesses, mom-and-pop businesses, to be able to provide deeply livable wages. So to hire at $20 an hour and to hire returning citizens. I think this is an important aspect that we need to support in our communities, and I would look to do that.
Thank you. Cindy, same question for you, a minute to respond. How do you plan to help entrepreneurs who are trying to open a business?
Well, we've been working with entrepreneurs who are trying to open businesses since my inception into council. One of the things that we do is work very closely with the Commerce Department and connecting folks directly to Commerce, which has a lot of services, a lot of resources, to be able to help them to be able to open up their business and provide whatever services and supports that they need. And so we've been doing that for quite some time now, and will continue to do so. We've also made connections directly with Roger Kern, who's a Northwest resident, and who's also a staple in the Commerce Department. So Roger has been up and down the commercial corridor, working with our businesses, talking to businesses, and making things happen for our businesses in our community.
Thank you. We have a student from CW Henry who is here, who submitted a question. We figured, it's a student, I wanted to ask his question. We'll give him the mic.
I'm a student at Charles W. Henry School, and it was shuttered, it was shut down abruptly over the weekend for asbestos. Without any warning, we had to shift to virtual learning, which is re-traumatizing for us and our teachers, after so much, like, upheaval during COVID. As a city council member, what specific steps would you take to make certain that schools are safe and you can avoid emergency closures?
We can clap for our student.
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank that young man for being here tonight because most of the CW students, Henry students, including my daughter, are not here. You know, but I want to thank him for being here and being so... Oh, wait, well, student, uh-uh. I want to thank, let me take it back then. I want to thank all of the CW Henry students who are here tonight. I'll have to make sure I let my daughter know that she should have been here. So, but going back to the question, I think that this was very much traumatizing to close the school after they had been opened and closed, and, you know, we went through a few different periods where people had to wear masks. We're rebuilding schools, that's what we have to do. As I mentioned earlier, you know, we have to rebuild our schools, we have to rebuild TMPiers, we have to find what other schools in the 8th Council District and throughout the entire City of Philadelphia that need to be rebuilt, and we need to do it, and we need to do it now. This is something that can't wait. We know that there was a teacher in South Philadelphia, I believe, at the Meredith School, who actually passed away from mesothelioma, which she contracted at the school. These are unacceptable working conditions, and we have to do more, we have to do better. And in the next term, I'm really looking forward to working with the mayor, who's going to make this a priority, working with the government. going to make this a priority, working with the governor, working with Governor Shapiro, who's doing a fantastic job, and bringing those resources so that we can build those schools back here in Philadelphia.
Thank you, Cindy. Unfortunately, I can't reread that for you, but Seth, you know what the question is. You have one minute.
Thank you. Yes, we need to, you know, again, we need to collect, we need to end the tax abatements. We need to collect payments in lieu of taxes from the mega nonprofits. University of Pennsylvania sits on a $20 billion endowment and pays no property taxes to the city of Philadelphia. This is criminal. We need to fund, we need to get this money to fund our schools. We also need to demand more from the state of Pennsylvania. You know, I think Governor Shapiro could do better. You know, his public education budget actually doesn't move the needle. We need to demand more from him. And we need to go to our federal government because this is a crisis. This is an emergency that needs federal funds now to fix this situation. We're sending our students in to learn. We're sending our staff in to teach and work in schools and buildings that are toxic. This is like Flint, but for schools. Like, we need the funds now from the federal government, from the state government, and from the city government. And we need the political will to collect them.
Thank you, Seth. And so, right now, that will conclude our questions, but we do want to give each of you an opportunity to give a final statement. Seth, you have, because of the coin toss, you're first to give the final statement. You have 90 seconds to make your final pitch to this audience.
Thank you. Integrity matters. Accountability matters. Leadership matters. Decisions get made every day that have enormous consequences for our communities, and far too often, we've not been included in those decisions. We've been an afterthought, or worse, a photo prop. After thousands of conversations over the last four months, we've heard the same issues come up over and over. Development is out of control. The cost to live here is pushing us out. Our schools are unsafe and underfunded, along with our libraries and rec centers. Trash is piling up, and gun violence has robbed so many families of the right to see their children live full lives. Neighbor after neighbor in every corner of this district shared their frustrations about the lack of constituent support from our council member. Calls unanswered, no follow-up, promises broken. Enough is enough. We need, we don't need four more years of this experience. Our district deserves accountability to people instead of special interests. We are not for sale, and our neighborhoods are not for sale. Folks, if you're ready to work across this district to build a future for all of us, a future where our young people are valued instead of criminalized, a future where our communities are strengthened instead of sold off, a future that we build together, join us. If you're ready to win, join us. If you want to learn more, check out www.sethforthepeople.com. That's number four. Let's make the change we believe in together.
Please hold your applause. Please hold your applause. Thank you, Cindy Bass. You have 90 seconds for your closing argument.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight.
90 seconds. Yes, you did. 90 seconds. Yes, I did say it. He had 90 seconds.
So, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, but I want to make a couple of things clear. The first is that if you want to be a leader, you've got to show some leadership. And when I say, Seth, where have you been? I say it because you haven't been out with us. It's easy to stand up, to criticize, to say you should have, would have, could have, done this, that, the other thing. But where have you been? You were born on a picket line. I respect that, all right? But at the same time, where have you been? Tell me what community group you've marched with in the Eighth District. Tell me what community group or playground advisory council board you sit on. Tell me what civic association you're a part of. Tell me, look, name five neighbors for me that I, that people know. Because I got to tell you, most of the people that have come to me have said, "Who is this?" And these are civic leaders. If you're doing something in the Eighth District, I know you. I know who you are. You know me. You've got my phone number. You can get me on the phone. You've got my email.
Please keep your responses to yourself.
You've got my email. You know how to get me. If you're active and involved in your playground advisory committee, in your civic association, in your school Parents Association, if you are active, then I know who you are, and I know what's going on, and I know you, and you know me. That is not the case here. And so, before we turn over our keys to someone who's never driven a car before...
Please keep your responses to yourself.
We need to make sure that we've got, we've got steady leadership in city council and in the Eighth Council District, and it's not going to happen with someone who readily admits, "I don't know."
Hold your applause.
And so, I'm asking for your support and on to election day. God bless you, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank, please, thank you, everyone. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank both of the candidates for being here with us tonight. I'd also like to thank everyone in the audience, and please take a minute to fill out the survey at the back of your cards.
Don't get me started. Don't get me started.
I always tell them else, huh? I know, I know, I know. That's why I sat over there. I was like, you can't be on the right side.
I just needed a person to sit out so that he could make eye contact. I'm glad it's recorded. I just can't believe she could be like, "It's crazy that someone hasn't been here," and then just like, "I didn't go to the meetings. I didn't do this. I don't know these guys."
They didn't get ahold of you on the phone. Like, I don't know what the fuck you're doing here. She got 12 years talking about, "Oh, next term we got..."
Yeah. Women with different times. Can't we all be so...
I love it, love it. I love how everything's next term. That's like the beauty of it.
It's a wonderful excuse of like, "You didn't get it done because other people..."
It's the mayor.
I'm sorry. How is it? What?
How are you?
I'm good.
I'm glad for Seth that that's over.
I was. I was here the whole time. In the background laughing. See, bro? In the background laughing. We was all sitting like, "You're lying. You're lying." You know, this is my neighborhood, so I'm coming out. Ain't no way. Ain't no way.